Going live. Excellent connection, it says.
Well, that's a good sign.
Very good sign, and you're standing right there, ain't it? Back to you, what you doing? Closing that rate.
Here.
I think when that drap is open, there's somebody standing at the podium. If the candle will light it on.
I had noticed that. Had to move your candies.
Okay, it should be. Should be up.
Speaking of the mic, Timmy.
Speaking of the mic? I got a mask on. Oh, okay.
Testing, testing.
Wow. It's coming.
Wow, it's light, it's really delayed. Yeah.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. Oh, there it goes. That was more than thirty seconds. Yeah, it was.
So, um, I mean, you know, sorry about that. Um, just make sure to hit record. Be good to go.
Are you streaming?
It's streaming right now. All right, Chris, be good to go.
I'm trying to laugh, I don't know if you're laughing at me.
Did I love you? Did I start laughing?
No, I was subconscious.
There's something laughing out, laughing out. That is embarrassing, that's.
You gotta get your.
I'm pre-taping this.
Pre-taping this.
Just one of my things that I've done.
Just a second.
The series. Media wasn't paying close attention, but it wasn't very.
I tell them it's time to talk, right?
Yeah.
We need to get our farmers out here. We'll call our meeting to order. I've got this mask on, but I was told last time you had a hard time hearing me. Can you hear me okay tonight? Okay. Yeah, well, it's marbles in my mouth. Um, we're pleased to have so many people here tonight. Thank you for coming. We do have several public hearings. Uh, we'll begin by having, uh, an opening presented by our county executive Craig Butters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Normally, I just offer a prayer for my opening statement. I'd just like to read a little statement here, and this is from a Facebook post by one of our mayors here in the valley. She's quoting C.S. Lewis, and this is a quote from nineteen forty-eight. And entitled, uh, from a book entitled On Living in the Atomic Age, and he talks about the threat of the atomic bomb. And I thought it was very interesting. He talks about how there are many things down through the ages that have caused societies to fear. Like the Vikings, the Scandinavian, um, the battles between the Scandinavians and the Vikings, or the scourges of plagues that come throughout, throughout the world, there are many different things. But the closing part of this statement is the part I would just like to read. He talks about also the first, or about several ways that we actually can pass from this life, and, and that's a inevitable, uh, part of life is, is passing from life. But the end of this statement, he says, "This is the first point to be made, and the first action to be taken is to pull ourselves together. If we are all going to be destroyed by an atomic bomb, let that bomb, when it comes, find us doing sensible and human things. Praying, working, teaching, reading, listening to music, bathing the children, playing tennis, chatting with our friends over a pint and a game of darts, not huddled together like frightened sheep and thinking about bombs. They may break our bodies, a microbe can do that," he has in parentheses, "but they need not dominate our minds." And so I would just like to challenge each and every one of us to, to go about our lives doing things that matter and not huddling in corners afraid of what might happen to us. And I would just like to make the remainder of my remarks in the form of a prayer, and afterwards we'll pledge allegiance to the flag, so. Our Heavenly Father, we bow before thee at the beginning of our county council meeting, express gratitude for the opportunity that we have to look to thee, to pray to thee, and to seek thy guidance and direction. We do so this evening and pray a blessing upon our council and the decisions that they make, the debate and discussion that we have here, that, that it may be enlightening and informative to all those who may participate or, or hear these proceedings. We're so thankful for the free land that we live in, for the Constitution, and the founding documents of this country that provide us with guidance and direction in how we may protect our liberties and freedoms and seek thy guidance and direction as a country. We're thankful for all that thou hast done for us, for these individuals here who serve in elected office, for the sacrifices that they make and that their families make. We seek thy guidance and direction in this occasion, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, you've all seen the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
No, don't approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Also, the minutes from our last meeting of, um, not July twenty-fourth, but.
July fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Uh, have you all had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Been brought to my attention on one item, uh, where it says that Director Adams, it was page six, Director Adams said that booking clerks are considered public safety employees and should have the same special leave options as other public safety employees. That should say that, uh, the booking clerks work similar shifts to public safety and should be allowed to accrue specials rather than, uh, receiving holiday pay. So that'd be the, that's the only change there.
Okay. All right, will you make a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
If I move to approve with those changes.
Okay.
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any follow-up to the minutes?
I do have something. Last meeting, we, um, talked about the CARES Act, and we had the Utah Festival Opera here and Summer Citizens, and I just wanted to follow up, and maybe Craig would have the answer to this, but were, were they able to get that information and make an application through the CARES Act to help out their, um, organizations?
Yes, we have received an application for the, from the Utah Festival Opera and some other organizations, and we'll be meeting tomorrow as a committee to overview those, make sure that they, they, they meet the requirements, and then, uh, make a recommendation on payment, so.
Does Caps send them?
I don't think so, I don't think I've seen them. Bryce is, is, uh.
But you sent it to them, from what I understand, right?
Yeah.
That's what Jill said.
Yeah. They have the application, so if anyone else that you know of is looking for the, to apply for that funding, have them send me an email and, and we'll, we'll forward that information to them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, don't sit down too, too long, Craig. Next, it's a report of our county executive. The only item is six B unless you've got some other things to cover.
No, I really don't have anything else to cover. The financials are there. Um, I think the county is all familiar and aware with, uh, situation with fair and the rodeo that we're moving forward. We sent out a press release just after our fair executive committee, committee meeting a week ago today, and so, uh, that's the situation we're at right now, so. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions, but, uh, we, we have also had an invitation from the, the rodeo chairman to participate in the, um, in the, what do you call, the opening of the rodeo?
Grand entry.
The grand entry. Sorry about that. And we're probably going to do that on Friday night for any of the council members that are, that are willing or would like to ride in either a wagon or a pickup, will probably participate in the grand entry.
But we don't, we don't horseback, come on.
Uh, we don't all have horses. My stick horse from when I was a kid is gone, long gone, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Okay, the next item we have, there, there's no consent, uh, agenda. We have an item of special interest, the Cache County Animal Shelter and Impound Facility Status Update, uh, by Sheriff Chad Jensen, so. Chad?
Well, thank you for giving me a few minutes, and Vice Chair Gina Worthing asked me to come and kind of give an update on where we're at right now. Um, where we're at right now is really slow. COVID and everything has kind of put the brakes on a lot of things and trying to get people together and discuss how things are gonna work and how they're gonna come together, but I think some great things, some good things have come out of this, um, with a little bit of time to try to think things through and put things together so they work. And I'll introduce Dr. Cody Ferber in just a second, um, as we kind of go through this. Now, part of the process we've come through, we, we discussed this last year about finances and what it was gonna cost, and we talked about hiring an architect, which I've been working with and dealing with. A needs assessment has been done, um, to what our needs are currently and what they could be in the future. In my mind, I think I have some questions about what those needs assessments could be, but we can talk about that when we get in a little bit more detail as we, as we move along. Let me talk a little bit about, um, what I've discussed with Dr. Ferber and what he's got going right now. He's, and I'll let him talk more in detail. Kind of the, the idea, and I've worked with, talked with Craig about this, um, in the past, and we do have the ground that, county has the property at my facility to, to construct an impound facility, um, for the animal control, um, services that we provide here in the valley. Working with Dr. Ferber and his group, kind of the idea came up as if the county was to build the facility and have it be county-owned building on county-owned property, that him and his group and his nonprofit group would staff it, that manage it, that work with USU and BATC, um, to let them move ahead with some of their vet programs and things that they have going at both locations, and the county would be responsible for owning the building, building the building, and the animal control piece of it, but not necessarily staffing and running it and the day-to-day operations of, of what that facility would be, and that would be left with, um, with his group, um, and he can talk a little bit more about the details with that. This is gonna be an expansive project over the years. To tell you how much it's going to be, I, I don't know the answer to that. To tell you what our needs are five years from now, I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is we need to start with something, and what I've got through kind of the needs assessment, working with the architect, talking with, um, Dr. Ferber, who owns several clinics of his own and other vets that he's worked with, is we're looking somewhere between a six and a thousand, six and seven thousand square foot building that would get us started with what we need for the current impounds that we take and the medical facilities and pieces that he would need, um, to do the programs that he would be looking at through, um, his foundation and the university and BATC. A direction that I gave the current, um, architect is, we gotta start with a number, and I think the number we talked about before was about 1.5 million. And I know there were some donations that were gonna be part of that, and the county was gonna pay for part of that. I think part of the donation piece is not on the table anymore, so it would be about 1.5 million for the county to build this facility. And what it looks like can change as we get more into detail on what the facade's gonna look like, what the construction's gonna be made of, how it's placed on the property and utilities, and all those things will come into play. But for about 1.5 million, it'll get between 6,000 and 7,000 square foot building, which with the animals between, really with the animal control in the valley, it's really what we do is Cache County and what Logan City does with their animal control. Six to seven thousand square foot building would be big enough to get us in for the next several years. And then, again, like everything else, we would have to look at that, and as the population grows and as the need grows, we would have to look in the future as to what other additions may need to come with that facility, like we, like we had discussed and talked about before. So with that, I would like just to introduce Dr. Ferber, let him kind of explain what his group and what his foundation is, who he's working with, and kind of some of the ideas he has, as if that agreement can, can be made. So with that. Oh, one thing I did forget to mention, because this, this is the big one, which was kind of started this whole discussion a year ago, is, um, the ability and a way for us to impound the animals as far as public safety goes. He's, Dr. Ferber has rented at least a, a facility here in Logan. Um, he's provided all the kennels, all the staffing, everything it needs to run that. And those cities who we contract with, um, who choose to use that facility, he's taking all the impounds for us at this point and not charging the county for that service. It's just the direct cost to the owners of the animals who get their animals impounded or picked up. Um, it's just a few blocks away from my office, so it's pretty convenient for, for us, and we haven't opened that door to Logan City yet, wanting to see what the flow is going to be, but, um, a dis, a discussion will be had next week with the chief to see if that's a direction that, that they want to go with their animal control and use that facility as well.
So it's a pleasure to be here with you. I'd like to start first, though, and say what a pleasure it's been to work with Chief Chad Jensen. Um, we kind of crossed paths back in April before the, or as the COVID things got started, and he is a great public servant, and I just, I love his practical approach, his, his sensible approach to things, his desire to solve problems and fix problems for the county, and, um, more by, by happenstance, we came, we crossed paths and realized that our goals from what we're trying to do, what he's trying to do for the county, just mesh perfectly. So it's been a pleasure to work with you, Chad, thank you. If we could all have public servants like you, we'd be marching right along. So to introduce myself, so I'm part of a group, um, it's a nonprofit group called New Vision Veterinary, and the, kind of the premise of this is we're actually trying to partner and have done so with two major, um, kind of entities up here in Cache Valley. One is the University, Utah State, their vet school. The other one is Bridgerland Applied Technology. Both these educational facilities have agreed to let us do the more applied learning or hands-on learning for the veterinary students and also the vet tech students. And so we are creating a campus, for lack of a better word, that would accommodate all of these kinds of, of hands-on opportunity for those students. Our initial grand design has a veterinary-type facility with classrooms, things like that. We've talked about doing other pieces that are, are animal-related. Another big key component was a shelter portion, so not knowing what the county was doing, this was already part of our master plan. And so in April, when we met, we realized, boy, there's an opportunity here to merge a private and public and nonprofit kind of entities together to solve some problems. So the university is, is currently working on helping us with ground. We've talked a little bit with the county about some potential ground, and we will be funding and building other buildings that go along in conjunction with the shelter. Probably the, the biggest piece that I see with this is the group that we've amassed include individuals like Dirk Vanderwall from the, the College of Veterinary Medicine, Carrie Rude, another veterinarian there, Susan Curtis, who's the Bridgerland kind of, uh, lead for their group, for the technicians. At least half a dozen veterinarians in the valley, out of the valley. At least half a dozen veterinarians in the valley, out of the valley, are part of our Board of Directors and advisors and are willing to get behind this project and move things forward. There's a lot of details on what we're trying to do that's above and beyond the shelter that I'm probably not at liberty right now to share those details, but it's quite a group. We have 16 professionals that are willing to get behind this project and are part of our group. To give you a little background about myself, I own four clinics, one in Idaho, two in Box Elder County, one in Davis County. And we do everything from boarding and grooming to the typical veterinary medicine things. Been doing this for 15 years, built all of the clinics, designed them, you know, run them, organize that. We have a staff of over 40 individuals, between groomers, veterinarians, technicians. Come from Cache Valley, love Cache Valley, was born in Cache Valley, have a great tie-up here and have wanted to get back and influence some things in the valley. So I'm really excited, really motivated to get things rolling, and we've seen miracles happen as we've unfolded this and pushed it through. So I really see this as honestly, an example to the country of how veterinarians, shelter medicine, education, and our county and the local entities, the educational components here, can work together to solve just a challenging problem that right now is not being addressed, particularly by my profession as a veterinarian. And I feel that need, I really do, and I see it, I see it working in some amazing ways. So that's kind of how we mesh together, how we stumbled across each other, almost happenstance, and it's been a pleasure to be a part of it so far. So we look forward to working with the county in any way we can to make this a big part of our campus, the bigger plan, so.
Thank you, Dr. Ferber.
Thank you. So New Vision Veterinary, New Vision Veterinary. So kind of a component, we're adding the campus, that sort of things to the title as we move forward, but that's the name of the company or the nonprofit.
County grew up in?
I grew up, so I'm here, here while my parents were going to school in Logan, and then we grew up in Fruit Heights, Kaysville, so Davis County area. And I currently live in Perry, down by Maddox, right? So I just don't even claim Perry, it's just Maddox. So I've definitely, you know, been a part of this, used to live in Preston even for a while, so. Northern part of Utah is my home, for sure.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Chad. Chad, do you have a timeline, or what can the council expect to hear more about this?
I think the timeline is, is with him opening the facility where we can do the animal impounds, I think it does buy us a little bit of time where we can really put together the right plans with the right architect and get a facility that will work for Cache County, that we can afford, that we can, we can do the right thing. Now, he's been a, Dr. Ferber's been a great partner, he's been, been, turned out to be a great friend, actually. But I'm also selfish for Cache County, because I'm a selfish person, I guess. We are, we can be great partners, and I hope that if this partnership works, it can last for years and years and years to come. But the discussions that we've had moving forward is, I really strongly believe that the county needs to build the building, it needs to be on county property. So if this partnership changes hands or things don't work between us and his group, whether it be a year from now, 10 years from now, and hopefully never, is that the county's not back at square one trying to start over again with, okay, now what do we do? We addressed this 10 years ago, but now we have a problem again. I think the fact that the county could build the building and take, and his group take the operational cost and the employee cost and the professional cost, really, that none of us have any expertise in veterinary medicine, I just don't see that there's a downside to us partnering with a group like this and bring a great service to the citizens of Cache County and their animals and with the contract cities that we deal with right now. Timeline-wise, I think we've got to come up with a number, a number that the councils can agree to what a cost needs to be, and I think we, if we know that number, then we can move forward with talking with an architect and getting designs and plans and bids out. But we just need to come up with a number that you guys are comfortable with and me discussing with an architect and with contractors at some point to get things started.
Have our major donor interested?
I don't think so.
The cost of it has changed considerably without the donor.
It has, correct.
My question is, presently, New Vision is handling it and is adequately doing it right now.
Well, right, the impound piece of it right now, correct. Yeah.
Would it be an impound and a shelter, or just an impound on the sheriff's property?
What we build?
Yeah.
I think it would be, it would be a facility that they could run, that could do the impound, they could do the medical piece, they could do the adoptions, if that's what we needed. It would be the full-service piece of it. Now, again, when we first started talking about this, my biggest concern was for the public safety piece, for the impounds and what do we do with strays and with things like that that we're required to pick up and take care of.
But if I'm not wrong, his vision is much bigger than ours. So the amount of property he would require is much bigger than the piece of property we have down there that we were looking at putting it on.
Yeah, well, I think the, correct me, I think what we're looking at on the county piece of it is building that facility that we need for the public safety piece. Now, he's got what he works out with his campus and other things, I think that's a discussion that his group needs to have and where it's going to be and how it's going to go. We're talking about county funds is what we're going to build at the sheriff's office site for those kind of things.
Yeah, that wouldn't be adequate for what he's doing. That's, that's.
I think it would be for like the impounds and for the medical part and those things, yes. The education piece, maybe some of that can be built into that, maybe it needs to be something separate with what his group is doing.
And how species-specific is this going to be for our side? Is it just dogs and cats?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Dave.
How species-specific is it, are we looking at? Is it just going to be for dogs and cats? Or are we talking if, if, you know, someone has a boa constrictor or, you know?
Well, we already have some of those issues. We already have some of those issues now. I mean, I think dogs are most specific thing, that's our biggest call for service is for dogs. Some of the cities I know in the past have chose to do cat programs or they do spay and neuter and release type programs. I mean, certainly we could do parts of those. One thing the county, we do have a problem with, or it's getting to be a problem, is large animals. I mean, there's a lot of farmers that aren't so willing to say, hey, if you catch those six loose horses, just go kick them into that pasture and the owner will come pick them up later. At some point, we're going to need someplace where we may have to go pick those animals up and have a place to hold those animals. We used to use the auction in Smithfield, but that's not an option anymore. So part of what we would do down there, I would foresee that we would build some sort of pasture fenced in area for large animals if we, and you'd be surprised at how many animal, large animals that we deal with every year. And many landowners in the valley are still good with find the first open gate and get the cows or the horses off the road, but those, those days are getting shorter with people allowing us to do that, why we try to find an owner.
I ask that because that's also cost plus on your end for education. I mean, that's, you would want probably more diversity too, so.
Yeah. You know, we get calls right now with snakes and birds and rats that get left in apartments, and we deal with what we have to deal with. You know, I mean, we've had some weird things that have come up, and some of the zoos have been very good about taking things off our hands and helping us with that. To say that we could ever build a facility that would ever work for every one of those things would be a hard thing to say. Now, I have, I-
One pen for the bats and the boa.
Yeah, one pen for the bats and the boa. No, I went down, I was in St. George from the sheriff's conference last year, I stopped, and Cedar City just built a new facility down there, and they build it for dogs with cats. When I toured his facility, he had one room that was full of rats that got left in somebody's apartment when they moved. He had a tank with snakes that somebody left in an apartment. He had three or four parakeets and a cockatiel that got left in somebody else's apartment, and those are just things that you just got to deal with as they come along. But the majority would be, would be dogs, and if cities and there's cat programs or he has programs that may work for him and his education piece that would allow more of those things to happen, we would facilitate, we could facilitate that in the building. I think the important piece for us would be, is, would be responsible for the building and not necessarily the staffing and all the things that would come with those things with his educational pieces that he wants to put together with his working group. So I think the next step is, and it doesn't need to be tonight, but we should have a little more candid conversation on, and what is a number that we're all comfortable with in spending to at least get this, our piece of it taken care of, and then when we know what that number is, we can move forward with an architect and with bids and get the project off the ground. But with what he's done with renting the space that he has here in Logan, that has bought us some time that we can put some thought and some time and some effort and do this the right way.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay. We have no department or committee reports tonight or no board of equalization matters, so we'll move to public hearings. First item is, we need to set a public hearing for August 11th at 6 o'clock to open the 2020 Cache County budget.
I'll make a motion to reset a public hearing for August 11th, 2020 at 6 o'clock, open the budget.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, our first public hearing tonight is for Resolution 2020-16 to ratify the appointment of Cache County Drainage District Number Six Board of Trustees. Craig, would you?
You'll recall, I think it was a month ago, we approved those appointments to the Drainage District Number Six in Lewiston. We realized that we needed to do that through a resolution, so we're just bringing those same individuals back to approve that. And so that's what this resolution is. We have to allow for a public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing then on this resolution, and so we will open it to any members of the public who would like to comment, present opinions, or have anything else to say about this resolution.
I've been dying to see if someone would stand up.
All right, motion made to and seconded to close the public hearing on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next public hearing item is Community Impact Funding Board, CIB, which is CIB, Grant Application for the Urban and Rural Area Assessment Cost of Service Plan and Regional Collaborative Plan. And this is a public hearing, but Chris, do you want to give a brief summary of what we'll be discussing tonight?
Taylor Jensen's here, he's our countywide planner, and he's been lead on this process. We kind of got it going, but he's really been holding his hand throughout the process. I'd be happy to have him come up and chat with you if that's fine.
All right, thank you, Chris, and hi, council. And I just want to first apologize, the email I sent you about this yesterday, there was a typo which I didn't see till after. Did not mean to call you a dead council, that was not my intention, so I apologize. So I know we talked about this a little bit earlier, I think it was back in April, but the process is a little different than we thought there at the time. So at that time, we were going for two grants of $50,000. In looking more into the program, we can actually only go through that expedited grant once a year. So we did that with our general plan, and we did get awarded $50,000 for a general plan. But to go about getting the rest of our plans funded through the CIB board, we actually had to make them bigger. They said the $50,000 ask was too small. So we went and we rolled into our rural area assessment, cost of services plan, and regional collaboration plan, and we're taking that through to the full community impact board. If the council decides that something they would like to pursue, it would be asking for $93,552 from that board. We would be matching that at 50%, so that would cover the full cost of those plans at $187,104. That's something the council is okay with us going forward with. We will pass these minutes on to the CIB board probably tomorrow and be interviewed by them on August 6th. The earliest date of funding would be October 1st for that. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we'll defer county, or council questions and open this up, this is a public hearing. And so we will open it up to public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address this, Community Impact Board, Grant Application for Urban and Rural Area Assessment, we'd invite you to come forward and provide us with your comments. Nobody's moving.
Motion to close public hearing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing then. Thank you, Taylor. Our next public hearing is a request for funding from the Cache County Council of Governments, CCOG, for MONS Corner improvements. And again, Chris? Ah, okay.
Matt Phillips has got some stuff. I'm just, I'm technical support at the moment.
All right. Matt, we'll let you brief us.
Why Chris is working on that, I wasn't sure what you guys got in your packet, so I brought a couple of slides just so that we could all look at them together. A little backstory on this project is when I first came to the county, there had been an accident at 2,400 and 3,600 out off Airport Road, we call it MONS Corner, had destroyed the guard rail, kind of taken out some of some private property. And in discussion with the road department, we decided that maybe because of the high crash history on that intersection, in lieu of just putting back the guard rail and fixing the property damage, that maybe we look at a long-term solution of piping some of the irrigation and making that a safer corner. In doing so, we realized that it's probably good to look at the whole intersection, and a few years ago, we received, the county received funding from COG to do some preliminary studies and some survey and some alternate alignments on that corner. So it's kind of a three-phase approach for this project. One would be to do some initial improvements now with county funds to fix what's currently damaged and try to make it safer. That'd be some piping and some irrigation improvements. The next one would be to come up with some concepts for some realignment, and that's why we're having the public hearing recently to apply for any COG funding. It's required that every project come before the council and also have a public hearing. So we're very early in on those stages, but the first photo up there is just kind of a picture of the intersection. You can see, I think I did a quick crash history, and the data we have, there's been 12 property damage crashes on that corner in the last few years. So it seems like we just are constantly rebuilding the guard rail at that area. So this is one of- So this is one of many concepts that we've came up with. As you can see, we're trying to widen the corner, make it a little safer, and try to find out a few different ways to bring those legs in. This is one of my more preferred options, is because it reduces the conflicts and brings some of those intersections away from where our main traffic is. One of the other things of the airport road is it is one of the highest volume roads that we have in the county. So we haven't selected an alignment at this point. The first phase that we would go after money from COG and our application would be for right-of-way purchases. Subsequently, later down the road, we would come back and probably submit another application for construction costs to build the realignment.
Question for you, Matt. One of the major problems you have in that particular area and in that intersection is high groundwater. You've got all of those different areas that to frame through that.
That's correct.
Spot. We take into account that we've gotta lower that, lower that down so that that water can all move through that properly.
Correct.
And that's one of the major things that's the problem there is you've got, in springtime, you've got water backed up all over that area. And the corner there, the way that we've got our piping and all that, won't allow it to go through. And so that's probably, after we actually do the design in that, we've gotta address, before we do the design, we gotta address how we can elevate, mostly lower the piping and all that, to lower that down. That corner, it's funny, that corner is quite high.
It is quite high, and currently, if you go out there, there's groundwater sitting all over the site. The groundwater is very high. That's part of what we're studying right now. The county would, as part of the improvements to immediately fix the safety, we'd be doing some repiping of all that ditch. Is one of the things that does help is that the bigger irrigation ditch to the north was recently piped, and that's pressurized irrigation now. So that does help with some of that groundwater and saturation that we've been seeing at that corner. But the piping is probably the most important part of this project.
You gotta get the pipes set in at the proper elevation so the water can go through that. That water comes in there from three different directions.
Correct. And some of it tries to keep going down 3,400 north into Benson. So we've done our surveys and our TOPOs to find out where those, which, where the water's flowing and where it's, you know, and so we can make sure that we're accounting for any water that's gonna come to this intersection. Trying to plan that now so that any piping that we do is part of the immediate fix, we'll be able to work long-term as well so that we don't have to redo any of those utilities.
You might become a hero out there in Bensonworth because they wanted this done for years, for years, a year.
It's been much needed, so we're hoping that this will be the last go around and that we're all done.
It's a very difficult, you know, a major project.
It is a, it is a difficult one.
Everyone in Benson has a story about MONS Corner.
That's right.
Everyone. The other thing is, is there some, I don't know, you've probably worked through that, it's some sort of emergency flashing system or something, you know, as you approach that, which there isn't right now, which I think the high fog areas, you know, that's one of the most densest fog areas that there is.
Those would be all part of the final design of, to make it as safe as possible. Right now, we're trying to find an alignment and see what that impact would have on right-of-way, and then start approaching the landowners and seeing what we're able to work out with right-of-way purchases.
Well, since this is a public hearing, rather than trying to design it right here at the council level.
It does, I understand.
Let's invite anybody from the public who would like to comment on this MONS Corner project. It's a public hearing, so we'd invite you to come to the microphone and provide your input and comments.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I saw a couple of people lean forward like they were gonna move, so.
I didn't see that. Everybody looked like it's not you, me.
Did everyone have, is there anyone who wanted to take a minute? Or whatever?
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Well, we'll reopen the public hearing then. Invite you to come to the microphone. Please state your name.
My name is John Fleming. I just have a specific question as to what are the, what is the primary cause of accidents at this intersection? And then how does this alignment solve that, mitigate that particular primary cause of accidents? Didn't hear a good discussion on that.
Unfortunately, I don't have the data on the specific cause of the accidents. I just have that there was an accident and whether it was property damage or injuries. So that would have to be something I would have to research more of exactly what caused those accidents. As far as what the alignment will do, it's going to reduce the conflicts by realigning those legs and also providing for a wider, safer corner on that. It will be built more to today's standards and specifications. So there'll be a lot of different aspects that go into improving the safety and the crash data on that, and the incidents that we have, so.
What other things maybe to help us understand that? There's five intersections right there at the same spot. And that's probably the primary thing that causes the challenges, is you've got people coming from all different directions. Bensonworth's known for their fog. We actually had, I think, a deputy sheriff get killed on that corner 10 years ago.
Hopefully that answered some of your questions.
Thank you. All right. One more call for any public comment.
Move to close.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing on this?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John. We appreciate your comments. Our next public hearing is Resolution 2020-01. It's Cache County Service Area Number One approving an adjustment of solid waste collection Well, I thought Chris was gonna say something.
Can't be lied.
Stop, Chris.
False alarm.
Well, we discussed this, was it the last meeting, I think?
Two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago. And it's a public hearing which discusses the fees that will be, are proposed to be charged for the garbage pickup and specifically for green waste and taking care of the green waste issues that exist over the, across the county. And do we have, do we have a slide we can put up here for people to see? I guess we don't.
I don't think we're prepared to see the slides.
Okay. Well, it is a public hearing. This is notice to the public. We will open it up to anyone who would like to address this issue. We vetted it fairly carefully two weeks, two meetings ago. Please come forward and state your name.
My name's Teri Waringa. I'm from up in Richmond. I fully support the concept of the recycling, green waste, everything like that, but the imposition of a fee to every single holder of a garbage can, I do have some reservations on that. I know myself, and there's a number of others, who do all their own composting of all their green waste on their own property. Quite frankly, when we've had the dumpsters up there in the past, I've gone down there three times, and every single time, it's been filled up within two hours of when it's open. So, I mean, I understand from Mr. Hamud that it will be serviced daily. But again, I'm not gonna be using it. I know there's others out there who aren't gonna use it. I would assume a lot of the farmers and ranchers in the county already have a green waste dump site, if you will, on their own properties. I'm also thinking about people living in apartments, assisted living centers, everything like that, that will not have a use for the green waste fee. Granted, it's a minor charge, $1.50 a month is what I understand has been recommended. But it's just the simple fact that it's another fee that's added, and where do we draw the line on when that stops?
Teri, I have a question for you. Are you on the Richmond City Council?
I am.
So are you speaking as yourself or as the city council?
I am speaking for myself.
Okay.
The majority of the council give a shrug. There are two that are adamantly supporting it, and the other's just sort of like, well, if it's there, maybe I'll use it. But I'm retired on fixed income, and, you know, these little fees keep adding up over time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Scott Wells. I work with Wellsville City. I just have a few questions. Wellsville City has kept the green waste going. We passed a resolution that charged the citizens $1 each month to pay for that, and we felt like that would cover that cost for a year. So we feel like the $1.50 is pushing that envelope. I also talked with Hiram City, and I'm not speaking for Hiram City, but Hiram City was charging their citizens 50 cents each. So $1.50 again is escalating that, especially when you're bringing the county into it. The county people with, when they have acreage, they don't use the green waste the same that small people that are condensed and don't have backyards use it. So I think we have to look at that in the grand scheme of the Cache County. Is the $1.50 really justified? Now, from a city's perspective, the green waste bins are high maintenance. Now, with the $1.50 going to Logan City, I understand they have costs of doing it, and I am very much in support of the green waste. It is a good aspect for the citizens, and they do appreciate it. But from the $1.50 perspective, going to Logan City, who pays, covers the costs of cleaning up those green waste and maintaining that green waste bin area because there is some maintenance involved that falls on the city, and we really don't get a benefit from it.
Thank you.
I'm Rod Hammer, County Fire Chief, and I'll address it from the fire side. The green waste bins in the cities and the communities reduce the amount of material being burned in backyards. So there's some advantage there in that it reduces some of the fire risk, especially at the harvest time or the fall time when things are dried out. Furthermore, the more we can throw in green waste and compost, the better air quality that we'll have. Now, with regards to cost and everything, I'll lay that up to you, but reduced fire exposure and improved air quality are some things that go along with that.
Thank you.
John Drew, Providence City Mayor. I'll talk as city mayor and as a private citizen. I've got, notice I got the wrong shirt on. Our, the county council asked that the individual cities, city councils consider the issue, solicit comments and feedback. The program, as ESA from Logan City outlined it, was enthusiastically received by our city council unanimously. That's our feedback to the council. We got enthusiastic response from residents who did comment. Of course, there's always people that don't wanna pay an extra fee. Personally, I don't have any green waste I generate. I went out and spent $750, bought a chipper shredder. I shredded all my own branches and leaves and everything else, all the waste. And the apple tree that's too big, I use that to, for a smoker. I'm a consumer of product coming out of the Logan landfill. I buy compost, I buy shredded tree. I think for $1.50 a month, I think it's a bargain.
Thank you, John. ESA, you?
Let me just address the $1.50 here.
Can I, if you'd state your name so it can get on the record? We know who you are, but.
Absolutely. ESA Hamid. The $1.50, dollar is for the collection of the green waste, and the 50 is for the compost management. So I want to make sure that is, explain it here. What you're combating to is, the dollar is still the dollar. So the 50 comes from the compost facility to better manage that. And on top of that, we're also cutting the cost of the compost product that we're producing, which we're allowing the public to make use of that material more than they do right now, so that we can have more of it go out of our compost facility than we're doing right now. So that's one thing I wanted to make sure that is well-understood.
Thank you. Greg?
And what Mr. Hamud just pointed out is that the $1 charge would be for all the citizens of Cache County, except for those living in Logan City. Those individuals in Logan City would be paying the 50 cents for the composting, which causes some concern to me because I do know that there are individuals from Logan that use the North Logan facility, and that's a concern. And so I don't think it's equitable. I don't think it's fair. And I think that the Logan ought to have some dump sites in the areas of Logan where individuals will access them, instead of going to a neighboring community to use their green waste bin.
Thank you. Any other people out there who would like to comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate very much your comments and willingness to come forward and take the microphone. We understand that's not always a comfortable thing to do. Okay. That concludes our public hearings for the evening. We have one item pending action, which ironically, 12A, Cache County Service Area Number One, Resolution 2020-01, approving an adjustment of solid waste collection and disposal fees and mandatory curbside recycling. For us to deliberate and.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would recommend that you take a motion to be as the Service Area Board.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are now meeting as the Solid Waste Collection Board. And so we can discuss this matter now as the board.
I still struggle. I still don't see the need, looking at what it costs for the increase in the cost. And we provided the service, and we asked you last time to provide us with how much went into your general budget, and I thought that was quite ample. us with how much went into your general budget, and I thought that was quite ample myself. Therefore, on the whereas's, I could never agree with whereas the Board of Cache County Council recognizes the need to adjust the solid waste to cover it. I don't see that myself.
I'd like to echo what Craig said, because representing North Logan and living in North Logan, a short distance away from the green waste, it gets full by eight o'clock every morning. And in talking with the mayor and our chief of staff there, they tell me that, yeah, they are very confident and can probably provide proof that the bench in Logan brings their green waste down there, because that's a lot easier than taking it to the dump. And I don't blame those residents for doing that. If I lived there, I'd probably do the same thing. But in representing North Logan, I would say that that's not fair to those residents to bear that cost. I do see that Logan benefits. I mean, they can go and they can buy these, you know, buy the product for a lower amount, just like everybody else. And I feel like either Logan should provide some green waste bins in that area for their residents, or Logan citizens need to help pick up the tab on this as well, if we agree to an increase, which I'm still not convinced that, I just, I don't see where, I don't get where we need it, and why two years ago, when we did raise the cost, why this wasn't a big issue then, but suddenly now it's an issue. I don't understand. It doesn't make sense to me. And ESA, if you want to address that, I'd be happy to hear from you. What am I missing?
The concern that Logan City's citizens use the North Logan drop site, I don't know about that. But I'm willing to have this come back to the Solid Waste Advisory Board at the next meeting, or maybe a year from now, and review this. I want you to look this as a solid waste fee, not only a green waste. We have justified this based on green waste. But if we don't do this, we will be cutting services that we've been providing. And that's how I want you to look into it. And these services have been to those cities where the drop sites are located at, regardless who's using. We'll be removing those, and it's those cities that their citizens will be complaining to their mayors to. So I want you to look into a service reduction or agreeing, increasing the fees. We have already tried to reduce the service, and we removed those bins in April. And we have received feedback from the communities. They want to have it. But I'm also willing to go back every year and review this with the Solid Waste Advisory Board and see if we need to adjust, where we need to locate those drop sites. If need be, and we can find a location where mutually agreed, I'm more than willing to do that.
So I'm to understand by what you said, the service will not exist if we don't raise the price?
Absolutely. In fact-
That's your bottom line. You're saying either pay it or we don't do it.
Yeah, and we are actually committed to providing the month of April and October. But it is the months in between that we have problem with.
So that would still be the door open for cities to contract-
Right.
Oh, absolutely. But that doesn't help the problem of Logan City's going to North Logan, or people that live in Millville coming to Providence City. It would be everywhere there is a container, who is paying what. The citizen next door can always come and dump it.
That's what they do.
Yes. And we have that option into the proposal we give it to you, that is, continue to provide April and October, and don't do season long. That was one option. Option two was, let the cities pay their services and have them be responsible of their drop sites. And the third option was to continue to provide the season long we've been doing. And that was the option that the Solid Waste Advisory Board voted for, simply because we are looking this as a countywide services, regardless where those containers are located at.
ESA, if you're located in specific areas within Logan City, I'm assuming that those would fill up just as rapidly as they do in the other cities. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And there are several things that are the benefit of Logan City in this case. A, Logan City has a spring cleanup that provides two weeks of material that, and we don't provide that. Logan City provides through its street department. So they do provide their citizens that service. They're closer to the landfill than any other community, and of course, they are capable of taking it to the landfill. And these services have been discontinued from Logan City 2006, and until today, I haven't seen a huge complaint like we've seen this year from the other communities. Why are we not having one? In fact, the biggest problem has been that it's an eyesore. We don't want this to be here because Logan City is more congested than any other community, and it fills up immediately, to your point, and it spills out. They have a very effective forestry program that also handles their trees on the streets and things like that. So there are other benefits that I'm aware of Logan City has, that some of these cities may not be as effective as Logan City is. So, and I'm willing to go back a year from now, review this, and make a decision how we want to do it. But I want you to also be aware that a lot of these cities requested, and we've retained the containers back, with the assumption that this program will be approved, and Wellsville is one of them, that they have a container right now.
Are the containers in Providence for their use?
Yes, yes. Providence also has the containers. Hiram has the container.
Third option.
Yes. So we decided, after we have had this discussion, to put those containers back, because there is an overwhelming support of this program.
Maybe to have you address Craig's comment about everyone else in the county paying that extra dollar, but not the Logan City residents?
And that's the one, that discussion I want to have with the board separately. If there is a common ground we can seek, I'm more than willing. This is the first time it's coming. It didn't come at our meeting. The mayor of Logan is here.
That's because there was conversation post-
After, yeah. So I'm willing to go back a year from now and reassess this. If there is maybe a better common ground than what we've proposed, to look into. But I want you to see this as a waste management fee increase that we need to do and avoid cutting the services back.
Thank you. Craig?
Can I just suggest that a year from now is not going to be the best timing. We're going to want to work these things out before next April.
And maybe wintertime is the best time to do it. In December, January, to plan for next year's green waste pickup.
Maybe we ought to call another board meeting this week and discuss it, not wait for a year.
We can have another Solid Waste Advisory Board meeting.
We're going to virtual meetings. We can do that if you want.
Mayor Danchee.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear that we're not pushing one option or the other. As ESA said, there were the three options presented. I sat through the board meetings, and I actually was surprised that this was the option selected. And I think Craig's point is well taken. If Logan citizens are using the North Logan bins, we do need to address that, because that was part of the discussion as to whether individual cities contracted. It's like, okay, if there's only a few cities, does everyone else come and use their bins? So if we're making part of that problem, I mean, that's a good suggestion. But I'm here to say, again, we're not pushing that we, in fact, we thought it would just go away, but the request was that the service be provided. And we do try and be service-oriented and provide the service that people want. So it was a response to that, rather than us pushing a new fee. So we're happy to continue that discussion. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we table this action until next meeting, and in the meantime, ask for the Solid Waste Advisory Board to meet and address this issue that we have stated.
Okay.
Which issue?
The issue about the payment, whether Logan should pay or not, or any other issues maybe the council had. That's the big one I have.
So the only thing, the only thing we're gonna, the only thing I can talk about is whether Logan pays in or not?
Or if you want to add-
The dollar. No, the dollar.
The dollar.
Fifty cents.
That's everybody, yeah.
If everyone- I just want to know what we're gonna be discussing, because he said if we don't raise it, it's not gonna happen. I mean, that was no discussion.
Craig, you had-
Can I just suggest a future meeting? That would give us a little bit more time. With the faircoming within the next two weeks, it might be kind of hard to put a Solid Waste Advisory Board meeting to get everyone noticed and together before our next meeting.
So maybe we ought to amend your motion to the-
So I'll make that motion to table this until the following meeting, after the next meeting. How do you say that?
Second meeting in August.
Second meeting in August. Thank you. And have the advisory board meet to discuss the cost, an equitable cost to all citizens of the county.
Okay. Motions we've made. Was there a second?
I guess I'm a little bit concerned that Logan City is going to be experiencing the expense of this with no extra compensation from anybody. And I'm not sure how to deal with that in the present time. I mean, they're collecting waste right now. I don't know. I'm almost inclined to say, let's go ahead and do fifty cents, and then let's discuss it further.
Well, but there's options right now that are out there. The options are that the cities continue, which they're collecting. One city mentioned that they were, Wellsville, we mentioned that they were charging a dollar to their patrons out there already.
Hiram's fifty cents.
So basically, it's gone down to a city level, that they decide within the city as to whether they want those waste bins or not. Now, I, your motion, I haven't even, I haven't seconded it, because I do think it's gonna, I think there's more discussion and dialogue that needs to happen than what can happen even in the next month. So.
So do we, as a council, have any feel that we need to help the situation? Or we just gotta allow the cities to do their own thing in the negotiation of Logan?
I don't think a raise is necessary. That being said, if the only way it's going to happen is with a raise, the one in Paradise gets full all the time. And the service is good, as is the service in Wellsville and every other community. The trouble is, we also pick up Avons, the people of Mobile Lons around town. I mean, they get used by everybody. So I do not think it's fair, like what we talked about, Gina, the equalization of the pay, because regardless of where that bin is, if somebody's going by and they got junk, they put it in the bin. And ours is right out in Plain Side, so, I mean, it's full all the time. So if our only option is to pay the price or not have the service, I think the people in Paradise would rather have the service.
That's why I'm saying we ought to at least, we ought to at least compensate fifty cents for everyone, and then have the continued discussions. And so then we're making a very small token of payment to Logan City. I mean, you've got to admit, Logan City's doing a great service to all everybody. Now, the problem is, is the equity fair for everyone? So that's the discussion.
Well, I mean, this is the, I don't know that we're in a position to change the determined direction by the advisory board, or recommended advisory board plan here at this meeting. But ESA did comment that, you know, in a year or in six months or something like that, we could review it again, as far as the parity between Logan City citizens and the rest of the Cache County citizens.
Well, it's my understanding that we're the one that sets the fee, and it's been noticed that we're going to discuss the fee. And that's not an either one fifty or nothing. It's, you know, let's discuss it. Am I wrong, or do we want to just totally, do I just totally table it? And, you know, I feel a little bit sorry for Logan City. They're providing a service. They say it needs extra money. It's not paying its way. And we're here kicking around saying, well, we're not going to pay until we discuss it some more. We ought to do something right now.
And then I'll change my motion then.
Our attorney's here. Can we do this legally? Aren't we the one that sets the fee? And it's been advertised. We didn't advertise it one fifty or no, so I think we can set it at where we want. And then that gives us time to have a good discussion on it.
I think how this really affects Logan more than anything is that, I believe, it was given to us that, from the enterprise, solid waste enterprise budget, one point two plus million is coming from that into the city, right?
Right.
General fund.
It's being generated from that. And so anything, anything-
That's the profit.
That's the profit. But anything that, if, for example, if we donate here, and we remain the same, then he's got to cut services because of their budget is set to bring in one point two two five million to fund some other aspect of the city.
My biggest concern is also that we have put the bins back into the communities. And if you decide not to fund it, I'll have to go back and remove those. And some of the cities don't have fees approved like Wellsville or Hiram is. Clarkson is one of them. Providence is another one. So, you know, my preference will be to approve the dollar fifty, and I am willing to come back in December, or any time, to review this after I have a chance to sit with the Solid Waste Advisory Board and have a discussion with it, and see if there is a better way to charge this, other than what we have proposed it. But if you also want to find some other way to fund it, like Councilmember Gordon suggested, I'm okay with whatever you decide.
What if we did seventy-five cents across the board?
You're not okay, because you just said if we don't do it, you're going to bring the bins back. That doesn't sound-
It is going, it is going to be tough.
That doesn't sound like you're okay to me.
It's, I agree with you. I don't know how to explain to them that without-
Well, I guess you can go back, ESA, and you can tell them that they can propose all they want and that, but it's still the council that makes the decision on the ups and downs of the price.
Yeah, and-
And we don't want, don't want to, we want to be fair. We need to have more discussion. But in the meantime, we do, we do have you out gathering up this waste-
Yeah.
-that's costing you money.
Sure.
And I feel good about what I've proposed, that I'll make a motion that we go ahead and go a fifty cent fee across the board until we have further discussion.
There's another option here, seventy-five cents.
An option, if it doesn't get a second.
My question is, oh, if we pay the fifty cents, he's going to gather the bins.
No, I don't-
No, I will not. I will respect that and continue to service.
Okay.
There's got to be more discussion, there's no doubt. But they're-
I'm already out there, and it is going to be tough to explain to those mayors and the citizens that I'm removing it. I think I'm willing to go this.
Fifty cents, including Logan City?
Yes, absolutely.
They're already doing it.
They're already getting, they're already paying the fifty cent.
They're not paying nothing now.
They only pay fifty cents now.
For compost fee, they have- For compost fee, they have a fifty cent compost fee, right?
Yeah, that's the compost fee.
But they don't have the other dollar fee.
They don't.
John, you were gonna...
I just wanted to... I ran my answer to Councilman Zellstein. Without having had a chance to read the bylaws of the board, I don't know whether you are at liberty to... You take a recommendation from the advisory board, whether you can say yay or nay or anything else you want. I don't know. That was really a guess.
Yeah, I thought this action was to approve the recommendation of the advisory board.
And in that case, I think that you are steadfast in you're saying yes or no to the current proposal rather than creating options, even if it's a good option.
We could take the recommendation for fifty cents across the board, compost fee back to the Solid Waste Advisory Board, and then come back with a new resolution that you can look at. And in the meantime, also discuss the dollar collection fee for the areas outside.
I think that's the wiser course.
So we put it from us, the decision to go back to the advisory board and let them review it and make another recommendation or whatever?
Yeah.
All right, that's fine with me.
Can I just answer David's question on the transfer from the enterprise fund? We have a set eight percent that we take, so that is essentially our... You know, again, if it were a for-profit management company, there would be a profit. So it's eight percent. It's not a set amount, it's we take eight percent.
So are we trying to kind of go back to the original idea, postpone that, postpone a decision?
Yep.
Well, I think, wasn't the suggestion we approved the fifty cents and then sent that back and then...
I'm thinking John just...
John said we really can't modify that. He's not sure.
He's not sure.
May I? And I'm not an attorney, so I don't need to... The fee is already separated, fifty cents for compost and a dollar for the collection. So you can approve one and not approve the other one. I believe you...
To me, that's logical that we could do that. I mean, we're the board, and the advisory board basically is the legwork of everything. And then they can put the proposal together. Yes, it does change the wording of the resolution, but I, as this is... We are the governing board on finance. We should be able to... We can change, modify, say, I only want, you know, forty-two cents. Or whatever it may be. You know, we should be able to have that, you know, as this board. We are the governing board on that, too, change those things.
My concern isn't with your authority, but with how it's been noticed. But if it was noticed as a compost fee and a collection fee and you approve one of those that's been noticed, I think...
The notice does not separate it exactly. This is waste management fee that comes with the fee. But the justification was separate, fifty cents for everyone throughout the entire district and a dollar for the county, for the residents outside of Logan. So that's the fee that you're not going to, and it's separated that way.
So in making that motion, and someone asked, does that mean Logan City? Logan City's already paying it, it's just the county.
Well, it would be... What we are doing is approving this recommendation from the Solid Waste Advisory Board.
You all have the resolution.
And if we have it, if we...
Actually, we could just take out, on section eleven, take out A. And then you could approve the compost facility fee of fifty cents per month for housing residents.
Right, right.
What section was that the...
We could do that. Now, if another resolution can come back after there's more discussion later, if you want to put the dollar green waste drop site fee, that could come back in later.
Right.
That's how I look at it. Am I wrong?
I think you'd be fine.
Okay.
So just take out eleven A?
Right, uh-huh.
On section eleven, A is what you would be taking out of the resolution and approving the resolution.
Just take out A. Do we have a motion?
Dave, you make the motion because you're the one that got all the As and the Bs. I haven't found them in mine.
On page four.
Hard for me to make a motion I don't support, maybe.
Oh, I'm doing it.
I got a question. We have two mayors here. You're the one that's gonna hear the brunt. Is a dollar and... What's a dollar and a half? You're charging a dollar, what's fifty cents more? Is that gonna cause disturbance? You're not charging anything yet, but you're going to. Is that correct?
It'll go on the utility bill, it'll get faster.
What about Wellsville?
What about Scotts?
See, Wellsville City did a survey. And in that survey, it worked, what, two hundred and seventy-one that was for a dollar fee and a hundred that was against the dollar fee. So Wellsville citizens pretty well overwhelmingly approved the dollar fee. And the problem that we do have is, like ESA says, that if only one or two communities approved this, and then anybody in the district can come and dump in their facility, we'd get Wellsville City to be the only ones that'd be paying the dollar. Whereas if it went countywide, at least they could dump anywhere they wanted, and it'd probably be more fair.
But right now, though, as written, it is not countywide. It is countywide less Logan. And that's the issue that we... That you're talking, like we need to talk about.
The dollar figure is the reason why Logan...
So it is countywide.
Yeah. And Logan, 2006, decided not to do it because it was just becoming too difficult. And then they asked the street department to do their spring cleanup. And the street department provides that for them.
Yes, so just to clarify, there are not dump sites inside Logan City?
No. It is curb site. They put it right on their curb, and the street department goes there and picks that up. They also have a leaf pickup.
Once a year.
Yes. And they also have leaf pickup in the late fall. And we don't provide that. They provide it through their street department.
What about the green cans?
The green cans, they pay five dollars.
So that's the difference.
So that was the reasoning why Logan is excluded. And this is for the county outside of Logan City, residents.
Yeah, we drive to the landfill to dump our green waste.
So if we send this back to the advisory board, I mean, if we approved... We could approve fifty cents for everybody and then take out eleven A, send it back to the advisory board and have them give us a suggestion of what we should charge all residents? Is that a possibility, Craig, being on that board?
We can ask Logan City to look at that and use some figures. Maybe take a chart of their bins or buy a piece of equipment or something like that.
Yeah.
From the attorney standpoint, as I think about this, the idea that those North Logan bins are being filled by Logan residents, whether or how much, there's been just hearsay, you know? If the advisory board is going to look at the issue, I don't think it would be good for North Logan City to... They've got cameras out there, I don't know if they do license by tracking or whatever.
They do have cameras.
But something more than the general feeling that there are folks from Logan coming over, it would be good to have...
Mark Logan told me that they are willing to stand out there and ask every person who comes where they're from because they are very confident about where that green waste is coming from. So that's what the mayor told me when I spoke to him.
So a portion of this needs more dialogue.
And again, my preference is to go through this, approve it, and then I will have more discussion with the board. Maybe come back with a different recommendation so that I can continue this service. And committed to it already, I have the bins back in the communities. Very soon, we will have also the pumpkin walk in North Logan, which they love. And we provide that service also. And a lot of other issues that... So I... My preference will be to approve the dollar fifty as it is suggested in the resolution. And I will come back December, January time, after Craig has more time to have this discussion.
I think there's an incentive to get it done when there's not a dollar in there. So I would move that we approve this resolution, but strike eleven A and send it back to the advisory board for more discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made, striking eleven A from the fee schedule. And it's been seconded, all in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah. I sit on that advisory board down there. I think it costs too much. That being said, I think every resident in Paradise loves it. I think they're happy to pay the dollar and a half. And I don't think sending it back is gonna change their willingness to pay the dollar and a half. I think we have a problem with people in Logan using bins when they're not paying for it. I think it's an unfair advantage there. But I think saying, you know, we'll pay the doll... I think we're being held at gunpoint, and I think we need to... I don't think we're gonna win that battle. I think it's gonna cost us a dollar and a half if you're out in the county to fill those bins. Now, whether we can get an extra bin for North Logan or maybe put two bins in Logan City somewhere, I don't know. But I think we're gonna have to pay the dollar and a half out in the county.
I don't mind if the county residents pay. I just think that Logan needs to pay as well because they benefit from it. And I think that that is what's equitable, if all the citizens pay the same.
There is another component in the resolution, which is to cut the cost of the compost material we produce, that I am not comfortable doing it if this is going to be separated also. So that needs to be struck as well.
I'm not sure I understand what you mean. ESA, can you elaborate, please?
We have... As part of this proposal, we've cut the compost cost. When we produce compost and wood chip, we sell it back to the citizens. And we decided to, because this is going to be now funded by a fee, to cut that cost so that more material can go out.
That's not entirely true. You decided to do that because you can only start for two years and you gotta get rid of it.
So this is a complication. This is a complication that the whole fee structure has also. So you may want to speak about that as well. So when you're approving this, that is also a factor here.
Section nine of the...
Yeah.
Yes.
You're not thinking along the line, they're going to ask them where they're from. And if they're from the county, then they're gonna pay more than if they're from the city. Are you not thinking that, are you?
No, no, no. I think whatever we do here, we need to do it as a community. Yeah, I...
And that's what we're saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Your comment, to me, would raise the question. You said earlier, if the council were to at least approve the fifty cents for the compost, you'd leave the bins that are out now. If they approve the fifty cents for the compost without changing the fee for buying compost, would we still leave the bin out? I think that's a question that you can answer.
You know, the bins are out because we committed to do that after the Solid Waste Advisory Board has approved it this. And traditionally, when we do that, usually we get the approval. And the mayors were asking, some of them actually committed to pay for it. And I said, hold up, I'm not gonna bill it to you. I'll keep the containers and we'll remove them and empty them for you. So we have Wellsville, Hyrum, Clarkston, Newton, I'm still trying to get hold of them, Providence.
Amalke?
Amalke. So we have all of these services out there that we're providing. As I said, again, I think the best clear cut is to approve the dollar fifty and come back in December. That forces myself and also Craig to come up with a different formula if we can. I still don't see how, but I'm willing to go out and look for a different solution to handle the issue of North Logan. So I'm prepared to do whatever I'm asked to.
Call the question on the motion?
Okay.
I want to just say that I don't think it's just a North Logan issue. They blame North Logan for this, I don't think that's right. But because, you know, we've also had this discussion on the Solid Waste Advisory Board, that there's a lot of businesses landscaping, things like that, that are also...
It is everywhere.
Where it's supposed to be delivering right to the landfill, also sometimes in this... Or you go fill that dumpster because it was handy and done.
The proximity is the issue.
They're not supposed to be using those bins, from what I understand, right? But so it's a combination of several things.
Now, the beauty about this is whether Logan City's citizen is used or not, or someone who lives in Hyde Park who is closer to that bin than going to the Hyde Park, Line Spark, and dumping it there. Once it's funded, it's just a way of preference. You can use it. You can even choose to... If you live in North Logan, you can still come to the landfill and dump it there if that's what you want to do. So it's just a matter of funding it.
Yeah, but the unbeauty part of it is, if you don't live in Logan, it costs you a buck more.
And that's where I want to look into with the board and see if there is a better way to make this adjustment.
And that's why I think that's an incentive if we don't pass that part right now, so we can get that worked out. So again, a motion to end the debate?
The motion's been... Question's been called. Let's... There's been a motion made and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Hey, we gotta count.
You can count. Who did you vote?
Nay.
So it's...
Who voted in favor?
I voted in favor.
Just two.
Just two?
Two yes.
Two yes.
Is this for the end debate?
Is this to end the debate?
There's a motion to end debate, so you have to do that motion first.
Oh, well...
That's... I was gonna say, we're not everyone's on the same page here.
No, I wasn't.
Please restate, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
There's no motion to end debate. There, I had a question.
Let's call the question as a motion to end debate.
Yeah, and vote on what's before the board. What's before the board is your motion.
The call, you gotta vote on what the motion was. And if it doesn't pass, then you...
That's right.
Then you need to discuss it or table it or whatever you want to do. And apparently, it defeated.
There's a formal and there's an informal way of calling question. You just say question, we don't vote on it. That just tells the chairman, hey, someone's ready to vote. Or if you say that I moved the previous question, then there's a two-thirds vote required in order to end debate and move on.
Yeah, and you take that motion first and then you leave the other motion.
So are we voting on ending the debate?
I suggest we revote, so that we are clear.
Revote on...
Is that a formal way? You said question, is that gonna be the formal or informal way?
Vote on what?
Let's vote on the original motion.
Okay, so basically...
Original motion, not the motion to end debate, the original motion.
John said question, and he said he's ready to vote. Gina said question, she's ready to vote. So there's no really motion out there for us to shut down debate yet. Now, you can bring up the motion that just tells you that they're ready to vote. Now you can just bring up the whole motion, which is...
Approve with eleven A struck and send back to the Solid Waste Advisory Board.
The fifty cents is what we're...
That's the motion.
Okay, let's get this clear. The motion is to approve the... Resolution, taking out eleven A and leaving in the fifty cents. And then we'll take it from there later, I guess.
Send it back to the board, the Solid Waste Board. But tonight, the motion states that we will support... But tonight, the motion states that we will support the fifty cents compost fee.
Okay.
I seconded it, so.
Okay. We'll call the vote then on that motion. Is that clear to everybody?
No. The motion is clear, but the reason we're sending it back isn't because we were upset with the dollar and a half. We were upset with the distribution.
Reason I'm sending it back is to discuss the equity of having Logan not.
Yeah, the distribution happens, Mr. V.
Yeah, how it's paid. Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a vote on that motion then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Put your hands, would you? Thank you.
Opposed?
So we didn't accomplish anything.
Motion. But we had a good effort.
What are we going to do? We going to table it and worry about it another time? Is that what we've seen?
Why didn't we come up with seven? Was it four to three?
If it passed.
If it passed.
It didn't pass?
No.
Four against.
Three to four, it didn't pass, and so we did nothing. So am I to the understand that we would need a motion to table it until we can work it out?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion because of the time that we spent on it, we haven't resolved it, and we table it and allow more discussion to the Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Table it till when?
I'd say I table for two meetings.
I would say the fact that you that there's been a proposal and you voted it down, you've been acting on the proposal, so to now table the proposal doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense at all.
So there was a proposal, you voted no, the advisory board can pick up whatever they like to at their next meeting.
So we are done with it until something else happens?
Yep.
Okay. No motion, no nothing. Let's move on.
Okay. Oh, you know, our meetings have really become interesting the last last while. Yeah. Okay, let's move on to thirteen, some initial proposal for consideration of action, resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, ratifying the appointment of the Cache County Drainage District Number Six.
I move that we waive the rules and right, yeah, waive the rules and approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thirteen B, resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen, amending the Cache County Corporation Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual Regarding Section X, Section Ten, Grievances and Appeals.
I'll move that we approve twenty twenty seventeen.
After waiving the rules.
After waiving the rules. Thank you, Dave.
I got the look.
Got the look.
Is there a second?
I'll slip them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I move to waive the rules for resolution twenty twenty dash eighteen.
Okay, go ahead.
Prove that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And thirteen D. We're going to skip that one. Okay, that's all of the initial proposals for consideration of action. We've added a thirteen E, just which is a discussion item on mask research studies that Paul has pulled together for us. And Paul, if you want to take a little while and.
Do you want me to throw that those studies up? Bart, can you help me get the PowerPoint up from that?
What are you trying to get? It's in there. There's a PowerPoint there. Okay. That's a call. Thirteen E.
So I know there's been a lot of discussion. We've received a lot of letters, got a lot of people in the community talking about science. And there has been some superficial reporting in the press on what these reports really mean. Very little journalism, very little in-depth study of what they are. So I figured we would go through and do some in-depth study tonight and do some journalism about what these things mean. First thing I'm throwing up there is from the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, the bioterrorism security. This study was done in two thousand six because after two thousand and one with the what things can we do? And these folks went in and did an in-depth study. And this study stated that says, disease mitigation measures, however well-intended, have potential social, economic, political consequences that need to be fully considered. It's not just health, it's all of those things. It's all of our community. And it says, up to this point, now, this is two thousand six, you're going to say, bore up, that was a lot of years ago, and we're going to get to that. But it says, studies have shown that ordinary surgical masks does little to spread inhalation of small droplets bearing influenza virus. And then it goes on to state that experience has shown that communities faced with epidemics or other adverse offense respond best and with the least anxiety when the normal social functioning of the community is least disrupted. So if you're going to lead, you're going to you're going to guide your community through, you want to disrupt as little as possible and do things in a measured way. So that's number one. That was two thousand six. And you say, well, what happened? Well, the CDC looked at those things in two thousand seventeen and published a study at which they said that to be effective, these measures must be implemented early and strategically targeted, layered, and tailored to pandemic, sorry, my eyes are bad, pandemic severity, and their public health benefits must be balanced against economic and social costs. So the CDC is saying you need to look at this in some total. They went through and said, the review conducted, that there is some evidence to support use of face masks by ill persons to protect other, but little evidence to support the use of face masks by well persons to avoid infection. Now, this was done after two thousand six, and they studied the H1N1 virus, they studied a lot of other things, and they still came back and maintained what they said back in two thousand six. And you say, well, what's going on now? Well, history's been rewritten in real time since the beginning of two thousand twenty. And the World Health Organization, July ninth, so that's within the last couple of weeks, did a little bit of an update. And it said, pre-print findings should be interpreted with caution. So they're already warning that their current rewrite should be interpreted with caution. And I think we'll see here that there is no scientific base, there's just modeling bases and and people using the word hypothesis. But it goes back and it says, and this is very interesting down at the bottom, it talks about what they're actually observing in real life versus what the modeling is saying. And everybody's going running to the modeling, but now they're saying, in highlighted, it remains unclear why the magnitude of estimates from modeling studies differs from available empirical data. And available empirical data is showing six point four percent of secondary cases resulting from pre-symptomatic transmission, while the modeling is showing forty-four percent. So in real life, they're seeing very little community spread, very little transmission, yet the modeling's saying forty-four percent. And these are the same models that have predicted we should see about a million deaths by now. And it hasn't happened. And here's another thing we need to be looking at. You know, everybody's saying a mask, you wear a mask, you're good. They go through and say, where there's community transmission, and I've broken that out separately, and where other prevention measures such as physical distancing are not possible, fabric masks, if made and worn properly, can serve as a barrier. Not do serve as a barrier, can serve. These are very important things to look at. And community transmission is defined as areas experiencing larger outbreaks of local transmission defined through an assessment of factors, including, but not limiting to, large numbers of cases not linkable to transmission change chains, large numbers of cases from sentinel surveillance, and/or multiple unrelated clusters of several areas in the country, territory, or area. Our community is not experiencing that. The transmission chains are very clear. Bear River Health Department's been able to track those. So according to the World Health Organization definition, we are not experiencing the need. Now then, we're going to go from these results, which are the bioterrorism folks, the CDC, and the World Health Organization. I haven't put any words in their mouth. I haven't editorialized, I've given you their words. Now, we're going to go to BYU study. And we're going to go through that in a little bit of detail. I don't have time to go through all hundred something references, but they're here. In their executive summary, BYU says, there is now convincing evidence for multiple controlled experiments. So convincing evidence, and they reference four, five, and six. So I want you to read this with me and see if you would agree that it's convincing. Reference number four says, and this is the Massachusetts General Bingham Study. It wasn't a study, it was an observational thing. And oh, by the way, the incidence of infection at Massachusetts General tracks almost exactly with the general population of Massachusetts that didn't implement those. So if they're saying it's masks, the rest of Massachusetts saw the same benefit without doing masks. It says, any type of community-based randomized trial would be complex to deploy in the right setting. So it was not a multiple-controlled experiment. Massachusetts Bingham Study said specifically it was not. And then they went on to say, the authors rightly note that other community-wide and hospital-specific interventions may have contributed to their observation. So they didn't come out and say, it's convincing evidence, it was masks. They said, there's a lot of things that could have contributed to this. Reference number five. It says, although randomized controlled trials on the use of masks as source control for COVID-2 has been published, a number of studies have attempted to indirectly, oh, it says, no randomized controlled trials. So they said, multiple controlled experiments. Reference number five says, no controlled experiments. So that's two out of the three that they referenced where they said there were. And number six says, research has also not been done during a pandemic when mask compliance is high enough for its effectiveness to be assessed. So BYU says there were convincing evidence from multiple controlled experiments, references four, five, and six, that all contradict that. This said there was none. And they also said, also said that authorities also worry about correct techniques for wearing, removal, and disposal of face masks. But these, you know, there's also some problems with face masks, but you're never hearing about those things. You're just hearing it's an unalloyed good. But yet, the research specifically calls that out, if you read it. Now, we're going to go to seven through eleven, field observations. Reference number seven is again the Massachusetts Bingham, General Bingham Study, that goes back and says, hey, all these things that we're talking about, they could be confounded by other issues. We're not saying it's masks, we're saying there's a lot of things that are going on, hand washing, social distancing, things of that nature. It's not just attributable to masks. Number eight says, this is the hairdresser study, that you hear that, oh, the hairdresser had a mask on, the person in the chair had a mask on, there was no transmission, we're good. That particular study says, hey, we had four kind of important limitations. The first one, only a subset of the people were actually tested. We didn't test everybody, we just tested a subset of them. And then it said, any test obtained from clients too early in the course of infection could be false negative. So we only tested, we didn't test everybody, we only tested them one time, we could have tested them too early. And then it says, viral shedding is at its highest during two to three days before symptom onset. Any clients who interacted with these stylists before they became symptomatic were not recruited for contact tracing. So nobody nobody went and looked to see, did those guys pick it up, or is it just this subset? And then finally, the mode of interaction between stylists and client might have limited the potential for exposure to the virus. So they actually went through and said, hey, a lot of limitations to our study. So anybody's saying this proves it, even the authors say it doesn't prove it. And then reference number ten, this is where you're saying, hey, if we all wear masks, we'll be good. This was another observational study done in Hong Kong, where masks are part of the culture. So you think, if anybody could do good, these folks could do good. And between the almost five or six percent that didn't wear them at all, another thirteen percent wore them incorrectly. So you're looking at roughly twenty percent of the population not getting the benefit of the mask in a population that is supposedly used to this. So if you're saying, hey, we're going to we're going to catch right up to Hong Kong, probably a little suspect. And I'm going to go to nine and eleven next, because these were interesting to me. This is number nine, that says, countries with pre-existing norms that all sick people wear masks are shown with a solid black line. So really, you can only see there's three solid black lines, one kind of across the top, one in the middle, and one going low. The one at the top is China, the one in the middle, South Korea, the one that's very low is Japan. And then all the countries are somewhere in between that. And basically, if you're looking at that, you're saying, how long, how many days are going by, and how many people are getting infected? Now, what I found really interesting about this study is they go through and they say, the pattern in the figure is quite stark. Countries with pre-existing norms that sick people should wear masks, that's those three black lines, have been among the most effective at containing the spread. Now, as I'm looking at that, you've seen that I was blind before, but as I look at that, I'm thinking, most of those countries are about as effective as any others. Maybe Japan you can pull as a standout, but I don't see how South Korea was most effective as compared to Egypt, Greece, India, Thailand, Romania, Ireland, Canada, Israel, Australia, Malaysia, Sweden. In fact, Sweden, that everybody's beaten up on, did a better job of containing the virus than South Korea did. Yet these folks say it's quite stark, quite stark, the mask work. And this is number eleven. So this is, I love this, the head of the Chinese Center for Disease Control and Prevention. I've made it a point in my life that any communication coming out of a communist nation is probably highly suspect, and that's a charitable thing. So I'm not going to listen to whatever China says. But the report then goes on to say, it is important to note that this association, masks, may be entirely explained by unmeasured co-founders. The reasons for large differences between countries and the sizes of their COVID epidemics is unknown, but we hypothesized. So we just thought that the population-level usage of face masks may be negatively associated with spread. And then it goes on to say, this research is yet to be evaluated, and so should not be used to guide clinical practice. So we're going to go back to the BYU study that says, there's convincing evidence for multiple controlled experiments, and we've looked at references four through six and seven through eleven, that all have contradicted that directly. But let's go and say, most of this evidence is COVID-19 specific and has emerged in the past few months. And they use reference one and reference seven. Reference one says, no randomized trials of masks so far during the COVID-19 pandemic. They do not support a substantial effect, and the evidence is sparse and contested, and the effect of masks alone cannot be isolated out. And then it goes on to state, again, this is Massachusetts General, again, number seven, confounded by other interventions, and randomized triers are not feasible. So you got one place before, one place after. I'm not really seeing that. And the other thing I want to bring up is everybody's saying Goldman Sachs says we can, you know, save five percent of GDP. But Goldman Sachs, this is their language, it is important to recognize that this estimate is quite uncertain because it is based on a number of statistical relationships that are all measured with error. And rightly or wrongly, I've gotten to spend a lot of time in my career. And rightly or wrongly, I've gotten to spend a lot of time in my career with statisticians, with actuaries, with modeling, with data scientists. And a good practice is you never accept the output of the model as validation of the assumptions that they made to put into the model. It's circular logic. It gets us to be where we were at at the beginning of this, that millions are gonna die because we put a wrong assumption in the model and it never took place. They've got cool graphs, they've got elegant math, you know, and they have got great code. But it's not great science, it's not even data. And by the way, this is the Goldman Sachs that settled with the Department of Justice in 2016 for $5.1 billion, because their models on mortgage-backed securities were a little bit off. So let's see some places that have implemented a mask mandate and how effective they've been at controlling the spread. This is the state of Nevada. The state of Nevada has implemented one of the most draconian mask mandates that I've seen. Anytime you leave your house, you should have a mask on, and they strongly suggest you should even have a mask on while you're driving in your car by yourself. They implemented that at 6:25, so you can see where I highlighted that on the graph, to control the spread of coronavirus. Numbers today look higher than they did back in June. Let's look at Contra Costa County. Contra Costa County jumped on this early and hard. They're in the Bay Area, it's a five-county area, they didn't do this just in their county, they did this in conjunction with five surrounding counties to put in a mask mandate, which they did on April 22nd. So you can see that top line, total cases reported by day. They put that in, and they had a seven-day rolling average of positive cases of 13%, or 13, I'm sorry, 13 average cases on a rolling seven-day basis. They followed it up because cases started ticking up in May with a mass isolation order, and they still had a rolling average of 12.9 cases. Well, you can see cases continued to climb with these mask mandates and isolation orders in place, and so they said, eh, this is getting out of control. We're gonna 7:5, we're going to double down on what we're doing. We're gonna go from a vast isolation order to a mass quarantine order, and we're gonna strengthen our face covering order. And that day, they had 144 positive cases on a rolling average. Well, let's go, 14 days should happen, we should see some effect of this. The 25th, 20 days later, seven-day rolling average of positive cases, 187 cases. So no matter what they put into place, from masks, from quarantine orders, no matter what they're doing, cases are continuing to rise. And I'm not saying all this because I say, throw away your mask, I'm ignoring science, I want to go to a COVID party and lick a telephone pole or anything like that. What I'm saying is, these folks back in 2006 said, masks have never worked, they will not work. We need to look at things as a community and do things that will, wash your hands, physically distance, have good oral hygiene, cough in your, in your sleeve. But outside of a healthcare setting, we've never shown that these work. And so I'm just gonna, and then Salt Lake County says, hey, we've, we've, we put in our mask mandate, so we're doing good, we're starting to go down. I pulled this right off the Utah coronavirus website. And if you look at the shape of the curves that go up and then see a drop, just like Salt Lake County says they're seeing a drop, Davis County's looking at a drop, they're right next door, Utah County's looking at a drop, like similar to Salt Lake's, they're right next door, and Weber and Morgan County are looking at a drop. And in fact, up here in Bear River, we're also looking at a drop. So you're looking at these curves that imitate each other pretty closely. So for Salt Lake to say, hey, we put in a mask mandate and we're seeing a drop, man, we're getting a lot of benefit from their mask mandate, because we're dropping too. Or maybe something else is going on.
Paul, didn't they put that mask mandate in and then that curve went up? That's what I recall.
Yeah, I mean, it does spike, so you see, and that's the same thing with that Massachusetts General study that they did, if you look at the curve from Massachusetts, they're, they're going up, they say, we're gonna drop in a mask mandate, it kind of peaks and then starts going down for, for everybody. So that's like me getting up at 5:00 AM and say, hey, I spent around three times, the sun came up. Correlation isn't causation. So I'm gonna end with this, and I love Frederick Hayek. The curious task of economics is to demonstrate to men how little they really know about what they imagine they can design. There's always somebody centralized somewhere that's gonna tell you what to do and tell you it's good for you. But to the naive mind that cannot conceive of order only as the product of deliberate arrangements, so I think, nothing can be ordered unless we make it so from some central bureaucrat. Yet decentralization actually leads to more information being taken into account. So if you look at what Bear River said on the 24th, hey, our cases have remained steady, our hospitalizations are low, our citizens are doing a great job. You've got private businesses that are requiring masks, which is their absolute right to do, it's a private property, they can implement whatever they want. The vast majority of our citizens are being respectful and abiding by that, and it is working. Why we would need to change that, I don't know. And then you start to see, when these mandates are put into place, it isn't just health, it's social, it's economic. And from a social level, you see where these mask mandates are being put into place, that you're starting to see more and more citizen engagement, citizens' arrests, friction, people assaulting each other. In this environment, with our law enforcement officials who are already under a microscope and are already having a difficult enough job, why would we want to put in a mandate that would cause them to have even more negative interactions with the public that are absolutely not necessary? And so that was what I wanted to present, so that everybody that keeps writing me letters saying, I don't look at the science, I don't understand what's going on, I've read those reports, and I've read far more than those reports, and I could have thrown in far more that says, mask mandates don't work, social distance, wash your hands, be kind to your fellow citizens, we're gonna get through this. Sorry if I took up too much time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul.
Very well done, Paul.
Yep, that's a lot of research.
Here.
Paul, I appreciate that because citizens do wonder, and they hear different things because there's, there's so much out there, and it's so hard to navigate. So I, I appreciate you taking a good, hard look, and, and I, I'm with you, that is why I don't favor mandating masks, because I'm not convinced that they, that they work at that, that level. And, and it's hard to say that, because we have friends in here wearing masks, and in no way am I trying to, you know, belittle you or anything, that's not where I'm going. I just think it's mandating it isn't the way to go, but I totally respect people's decision to wear masks, if that's what they choose.
Thank you. Okay.
If you go to hospital, it sure up your work, it sure won't give thanks to you.
Well, and that's, that's the other thing you look at in those settings, and in hospital settings, and then even the one thing that I was very interested in, because the one thing is always, you wear a mask, they wear a mask, and we're good. But dentist offices have been open through this thing. I looked at the American Dental Association survey several dentists, only one person's wearing a mask in that engagement, the dentist is. He's literally looking within 16 inches of somebody's face that may or may not have COVID, but you know, we gotta wear a mask because we're asymptomatic, so those folks could. No documented cases that I could find, and only one person was wearing a mask. So, so absolutely, if you're concerned, if you're in a hospital setting, if you're wearing them appropriately, if you're using a clean one every day, this isn't, you know, you could just get a mask and go. Part of the problem is these masks can gather some bacteria, can do some other things, you're messing with them, you're, you're moving the virus up, maybe off the mask or off your hands, on your face, so there's a lot of those kind of things. But absolutely, they can be useful, but, but I think if we overstate the case, we're doing a disservice.
Yeah, but I, I don't believe in mandates, but in the same token, I don't, if somebody wants to wear, I think it's just a personal, it's a personal thing.
Yes.
I.
It has turned into a judge.
If, if I had had cancer or heart problem, I'd wear one anywhere high as a wind.
Absolutely.
Might not help, but it'd sure make me think it was.
And it, and it very well could.
And it might, yeah. Well, let's move on. 14 other business, the county fair coming out August 5th through the 8th. Interesting, no parades, are there?
The one and only.
Hey, Carl, that Skin Town parade was fantastic.
I feel so bad I missed that.
We missed you, Carl.
I know. It went right past the house I grew up in.
Gina pointed it out.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
I have a question on the county fair, Craig or whoever. Are there going to be booths there or not?
Yes, yes. There will be both food and some commercial. There will be a lot more room for them to space out, so they probably won't be side by side.
Okay.
Yeah, they can use the carnival there.
Yeah, they, they really, we've really opened it up.
Okay, great.
Okay, council member reports, Dave, let's start with you.
All is well.
Boy, that's a nice.
All is well.
Nice thing to hear. John?
All is well, I think we're getting held hostage at solid waste, but I think that's what's gonna happen. I'm, I'm glad you, we may get Logan to chip in, but I, I think we're held at gunpoint.
Well, I think, I live in Logan, and I think we ought to. I mean, that's, that's an annual price of one trip to Wendy's. Not a big deal. Barbara?
Thank you.
Gina?
I had a question, maybe Craig could answer this, or, or help me know how to go about it. I have a question on some of our numbers, the COVID numbers, ones that Janine gives us, I plugged them in to a spreadsheet, but I came up with different numbers for seven-day rolling average than Lloyd did, and also for a hospitalization number. And I'm wondering if the health district could maybe publish a seven-day rolling average for us, or, you know, a high point for hospitalizations or something like that, so that we have that information and the residents have it as well? Rather than a graph, maybe actual numbers or something like that? Would that be a possibility, do you think?
I could ask Lloyd to see if the health district could, or something like that, I don't know where the discrepancy would be, to tell you the truth. Numbers are, are hard to track, hard to follow, especially when your sources are not the same. You have state source, you have, you have local health district source. I, in my opinion, they should correlate, and I don't know why they don't. I, I assume that the local health districts were feeding their information to the state, and that's where they, that's where the correlation would be. But apparently, some of the test results are coming from, coming to the county or to the local health department, some are coming to the state, and how that all meshes, I'm not sure. I don't know. The number of testing facilities, I know that IHC has a facility, and the state has a state lab, but other than that, I'm not sure who else is doing the testing of the samples or.
Well, it's possible to have it mixed up. I, I know I went to Salt Lake, and outside of Huntsville, there's a big place where people were just driving in, getting, getting tested, and they asked those people where they were from, and all those people weren't from Salt Lake. So there's people from Cass County, well, you know, they're all getting tested, so Lloyd only has what gets tested here. So if you get tested there, it's, it's gonna show up as happening, you live in Cass County, and that can skew it too. You know, it's like Salt Lake, if they want to make their numbers go down, just only do 5,000 tests one day instead of 10,000. They, it needs to be the rate of infection per test, number, number test bad doesn't mean anything.
I want to make clear, I wasn't trying to accuse anybody of falsifying numbers, I was just trying to figure out a good way to get some good, solid numbers.
No, well, I, I think that's pretty tough in this environment. I know, I know in a, in a, in a more sedate environment with one company, that when I was a financial officer, the first half hour of the meeting was, we'd argue about which system you pulled the numbers from, so you would know how to argue about the numbers.
Yep.
That's what you take statistics for.
That's all.
Paul?
I've already taken enough time, glad to be here.
Gordy? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. These are, these have really become interesting meetings, you know?
We gotta get back to those.
Yeah. Three years ago, we just kind of cruised along without a lot of.
Why'd you change it?
Yeah, I don't know. Dave, come back to the, come back to the gavel here. We need, need to get back to 45-minute meetings. Okay.
Good job, Paul. Very well done.